Let me know when you're ready.
Great.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Thank you. All right, thanks everyone for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good soul, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda tonight is we have our OPA office for our student board member. So you get to rise and be on camera all at the same time.
Great, cheating.
Just repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the position of student board member to which I am now assigned.
The duties of the position of student board member to which I am now assigned.
All right. Okay, now you're officially one of us now.
Sorry. All right, our next item on the agenda is we have a presentation for the, I think it's gonna be the middle school art club?
Yes.
It is, all right. I'll turn it over to Samantha Catano.
That's it. Hi guys, I'm Samantha Catano. I'm a new art teacher at the middle school. I really want to start an art club there. I think it'd be a great opportunity for the students to work on art after school, especially our seventh grade scholars who don't have art in their schedule right now. A bunch of them have expressed interest. I had a list of nineteen of them who came after school the other day. Um, we work on things like sculpture, fashion design, any type of ceramics. Yeah.
Are these kids, are they all seventh graders or is it a range?
It was a range of different ages, yeah.
Have any idea like how you organize different projects?
Well, I can walk them through certain projects or guide them through their old project. Like let's say a student really wanted to do painting, I can walk them through step by step how to complete their painting. But I have a guided project for each session.
Is there an ideal number or a maximum number of scholars that you could service in something like this?
I would say probably thirty-five would fill up my classroom, so no more than that, otherwise we'd have to move to the auditorium or something.
How about supplies? Are you concerned that the supplies that the club would use would take away from the supplies allocated for the classes there in school?
A little bit, but we could do fundraisers, maybe sell cupcakes or something at a show.
I think it's a good idea.
Cool. Sell the art?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It can be approved and it's an unpaid position for this school year and it'll be revisited after the twenty-three, twenty-fourth of June.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone here for public comment tonight? All right. Moving right along, the board discussion. We have the minutes from the November sixth meeting. Question or comments in the?
Sharon.
That was Sharon, was in charge.
She told me everything I did wrong.
Did she?
Please ban the gabble.
I, I, I did an executive session, but I never called the meeting to order. Nor did I adjourn it.
Motion to approve those minutes. I had seconded by Kevin. All in favor? I have to abstain. I forgot I was in. Uh, any other things for board discussion tonight? All right, next item, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Um, before I start, I just wanted to mention that there's some food here from the middle school culinary club that had their first meeting. I sent the board a photograph of the Trish Avron and Amy Romine of the advisors. Bill Cooper and Todd Walker assisted them, and here we have some chicken, garlic, uh, I don't know what you call them, crumpets or something? I tried two of them and I'm still talking. No, they were, they're great. I heated them up and they're delicious and they said they would love to cook for the board sometime, so I sent you the email that they both sent. Seemed to have a great time. Scholars looked happy and if anybody is interested in taking some home, please do so. I can verify that they're tasty.
You can scout some bacon next time?
I made sure there's no shellfish after I tried it. Uh, I also want to mention that on tonight's board agenda is the retirement of Kate Evar's Elementary Special Education, after nineteen years of service to the district. Thank her for her years of service and wish her long, healthy, happy retirement. Couple of things. One, I'm pretty excited. I think the board has some documents in front of you. One is about the Glover's Educational Foundation and we haven't done a press release on this yet, but in front of us, we've been a lot of work on this so far. Uh, I did send you that, the work that Kirven Philazzo's been doing for us, Pat Festerow in particular. I sent an email explaining that the foundation has been established effective December first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we have our EIN number and it'll be a while before I think we get our five oh one C three designation for about six months, I think, from the IRS. But we can start operating as not-for-profit. The vision and mission and core values are on the document for you to take a look at. And also I just want to let you know who's been, you know, kinda heading us up. Kate Brown, uh, Nancy Brown, retired elementary teacher, Chris Wojewski, myself, Jen Hazard, Representative Bob Smolyn, Jeff Peck from Nathan tour hospital, Ann Bowles from Chamber, Sam Zimmerman, uh, Sam works with Morgan Stanley, Sam Glassbergen from Hannaford, Rich Jardino, our sheriff, Tammy Metelka, I think she's in real estate, Penny Reibenberg from Niagara Center, and LaShawn Hawkins. So we've met several times and you'll see the work in front of you. Uh, you know, the foundation premises to help support things that are outside the school budget. So we were, our hope, our first hope is to focus on early interventions to help young parents in the community through a number of things. One of them obviously has been to continue supporting our talk and his teaching initiative with the Little Free Libraries that Nancy spearheaded in the last few years. We've put, I think, five thousand books into the community. We've done care packages for new parents at Nathan tour hospital. We hope to expand that to St. Mary's Hospital. We have people in our community who use that hospital. And also, uh, the Bright by Text, which we're gonna push that out in the coming weeks. Bright by Text is a free app that young parents, zero, well, zero, from newborns to age eight could sign up for. Several times a week they would get tips about parenting through whether it's cognitive development, uh, health, physical health, things like mental, emotional health. Seems great. Uh, so that's our first initiative as part of the foundation, but obviously you'll see through the mission and vision, it's to support the young people of Glover'sville throughout their development and to make them workforce-ready. So it's not just about education, but it's about preparing them to be contributing members of our society. I'm proud to be a part of this foundation and it's gonna be kind of a slow rollout. We're talking about fundraisers possibly in the spring of twenty, excuse me, in the winter of twenty-five, maybe having like a real kickoff gala. Uh, we talked about hosting it at the eccentric club and having like a real, uh, you know, we, we wanna start fundraising before that, but that was an idea that was put out to really kind of draw people together, mid-winter gala, and it sounds like a great idea. We have the right people on and we're certainly receptive to more people joining us. But I'm really pleased with the community leaders that have joined us and proud of the work that we're doing already, so. Any questions on the foundation? Glover'sville Educational Foundation Incorporated. Something our community should have and happy to be part of getting it in place. Uh, there's been some issues with Humana impacting our retirees. There's been a lot of communication back and forth with business office, myself, with our, uh, our broker. And the issue is that the providers, primarily whether it's CDHP, uh, New York State Oncology Hematology, Nathan tour hospital, the providers and Humana are having conflict, for lack of a better term, over reimbursement rates. And it's leading to a lot of uncertainty and I sent the board the letter that I sent to retirees. Retirees are being told by the providers, you're no longer gonna be accepted by Humana. We're being told that there's still communication and dialogue going on, that this is, this is how it works and it's, people get upset, people get agitated, sometimes it's settled and there's reimbursement rates that are determined and that things calm back down. Uh, but we're trying to hedge all bets and, and looking at other, going out to bid, which would be wise probably anyway. But we certainly understand it causes uncertainty for our retirees. And that's not, you know, we're, last thing we're trying to do is cause any anxiety for people who serve this district and are upset with their providers and, we're working on it. It's the best I can tell you right now is we're working on it. It's on Kathy's to-do list every day and as well as mine. But at the moment, we are currently unable to make anything happen. We're waiting to see what's gonna transpire in the next week or two. We get information back from our broker, we'll be, have more information. So, we apologize for the uncertainty that our retirees are facing and we will stay communicative as best we can with them. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, so earlier in November, we had a brainstorming, well, about mid-November, we had a brainstorming session with teachers and staff. We put it out to everybody who works in the organization to come in and sit with Chris and I and brainstorm different issues, solutions that they may have, basically anything that's not personnel-related or union or contract-related. Just examine ideas, talk about concerns. Two of the big takeaways were a desire for better math vertical alignment with the programs that we use, the different ideas that people are concerned about, concerned about social promotion in the intermediate levels and middle school levels. Even down to the point where they're concerned about how much color is in some of the elementary, uh, uh, materials that the children use. So that was one of the big takeaways, a desire to, to do a deeper dive, really K-12, on our math curriculum and what we're doing to address alignment. The other was behavioral management at the elementary level. That was, those two issues rose to the top pretty quickly. It was evident that that was what most of the people were there to talk about. So we've asked the administration to start working with their leaders at different grade levels to address those two issues. So it's not gonna be something we solve overnight, but it certainly brings our attention what some of the concerns are from the field. And we hope to develop a plan to have better behavior management plans, whether it's through PBIS at the primary and intermediate levels and even up through the middle school. And our math program. Some of the other ideas were, that were talked about were fifth to sixth grade transitions. Uh, there was a desire for an auditorium at Boulevard rather than have the, I told them that that was probably a bridge too far at the moment. I doubt that we're going to be funded to build an auditorium at Boulevard, but I told them I would talk, talk to our architects and engineers about it. Remember what any of the other issues were? No, okay. So there was a few others. They were, those, the major takeaways were math and behavior management. So we appreciate about roughly thirty staff members who came to the November meeting. We'll hold another one roughly late January, early February. And encourage all staff members who have ideas or concerns to come and, and have the conversation. It was a great conversation and certainly it's great to have some takeaways of things we can work on to improve as an organization. Wanted to have a conversation about winter building use. As the weather turns sour, this kinda comes up most years. I'd like to get a plan in place for how Glover'sville and large school district addresses communities' desire to utilize facilities for walking, staying healthy during the winter months and possible use of our pool. You know, we have neighboring districts who do have similar programs and I think that's one of the reasons why a number of people have asked in recent days of what Glover'sville does. And it's something frankly that we should get our arms around and, and come up with a solid plan, so I wanted to open it up. You know, my opinion is that we should probably pay somebody to do it. Just, I think in the past Glover'sville used to allow people in and ask the nighttime custodians to keep an eye on it. I don't think that's a good system. Obviously, the pool, you would require lifeguards and a supervisor. That's how some districts, Johnstown, for example, they have a one chaperone for their walking program, two lifeguards and a chaperone for their pool, and they're all paid at hourly rates. So that's just one example. So any thoughts or questions or ideas about addressing this is soon?
We used to have something similar and just, they used to walk around the middle school years ago. Um, but not the pool was never open.
Pool seems a little risky.
My question is.
Walking insured pool?
What happens to the liability standpoint? So we have the locker room changing, they're jumping off the, jumping into the pool, they hit their head, what happens with all that stuff?
Good questions. Good questions.
Walking, people used to walk around the corridor of the gymnasium upstairs, around the, the main lobby and then around the outside. They wouldn't be allowed to go in the actual wings, but they just walked around the whole outside.
Used it at the high school too. High school had a walking.
I know that when I was a principal founder, they did have a swim program. The community was able to come in and use it. Um, and it was staffed, but I'm sure Kathy, that would be, just be something I would assume there'd be a waiver and a, some kind of binder with our insurance company to Mike's concern. But, you know, you're the board of education, you, you represent the taxpayers. I will proceed as you determine something like this. You know, I think if we're gonna do a walking program, it should be in one building. I'm not sure stairs, I'm sure it's good for getting a little extra cardio, but maybe avoiding stairs would be wise.
Use it a monitor too, keep it on one level.
Right. My suggestion would be the high school might be an easier facility to monitor. You open one door seven to nine, three days a week, however you wanna do it. And that person ensures that everybody signs in, signed out, and when it's done, if somebody's still there, you elicit the help of the custodial staff to, to determine where that person went. But if a person does go out a side door, then that's an issue. If somebody gets, but you can do a sweep of the building and make the determination, you know, Dave Haller and left via a different exit, next time Dave Haller comes, you say, Dave, this is gonna be your last chance. You need to sign out with us 'cause you caused us an extra twenty minutes worth of work to make sure you're not somewhere in the building, you know, in a crisis.
It's usually the same people that show up to walk at the high school every year.
Is it something the board wants, is willing to pay a chaperone two to three nights a week for the walking program? And I don't know if, if there's different feelings than Mike has about the pool. If you say leave the pool off the table for now and just focus on the walking, I'll do that. Just want some direction on this.
I think start with the walking and see how it goes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any roller blade?
No, it's walking and really no running. We don't allow the kids to run through the building, so.
Oh, roller blade, although that would be fun down the hill.
All right, thank you. That gives me some direction. All right, update, the concession stand at Park Terrace is being renovated. The siding is not up yet, but the electric, electrical panel's been taken out of the concession area and made more secure. We are going to have metal roll-down doors on the outside instead of those wooden doors. It's gonna be new siding. There's the bathrooms, the two bathrooms are gonna be functional again. You know, I talked to a number of people who said that, you know, having a bathroom with running water is kind of essential. And we might still have porta-johns for people who just don't mind using a porta-john. Uh, but I think having those two bathrooms, which are only usable for one person at a time, my thought is make them multi-sex or, uh, I don't know what the right word is. Unisex, male or female, for both of them.
Will there be cat boxes?
Nope. And I am getting a quote on the roof. There are some holes in the roof. But we're gonna talk to Turner, 'cause obviously that's something that we, we don't want to get raked over the coals on stuff, so. All in all though, I think it's gonna look beautiful, I think, to the community and it's gonna be safer and less apt to be broken into, which is important, is to make that a much safer, more secure facility. And I think we're able to accomplish that, update it without spending too much money, so. Any questions on the concession stand? I think it's gonna be a dark gray siding. Any ideas on the roof? Different people throwing around different ideas, black roof, white roof. Uh, it's gonna be like a charcoal siding. So it should look nice. I mean, it's, that, that board and batten, or T-one-eleven, I think it's called, this was pretty worn out. So if you have any ideas of what color you'd like the roof, let me know. I received an email, well, first I was stopped by a staff member and asked about a, what the cost would be or would the district ever consider putting a middle school bus shelter out in a bus zone. Mr. Salvio, I'm sure spends more time out there than I do during arrival and dismissal. And it certainly makes sense that the, the staff and the kids who are waiting for buses are eighty yards from the building and having some sort of protective shelter there might be prudent. Ben, do you have any thoughts or do you wanna share on that?
I mean, you know, it's, it's windy up here. The rain, even when it's, it's not raining, it's so damp and cold and with the wind, it's, you know, it just goes through people. And sometimes in my situation, you can only have so many kids go in the building at once. You know, so, and I'm not there very long at dismissal for the middle school, but from what I understand, there's a lot of kids sitting out there waiting for buses at that moment. And if it's, you know, if it's a downpour or, you know, it's windy, very windy up here, as everybody knows.
The bus stop by the high school certainly, they can stand in that for you between the.
Well, they've let them in. They let them in the building. And they're very close too, where the middle school is not. So if, to me, that is, that would be one spot that would be warranted. I am told that that's not eligible for this project. It'll be something to just, Mike, Mike Andrew sent an email explaining what we would have to do. He's like, have to go out and then make referendum to ask for the community to support such a, uh, uh, project or put it into a future capital project. But because of the scope, that it could not be tied into the wish list on this current project. I'll try to seek more clarity on that of what our options are and I, and I did ask them to put a price together of what it would cost to create a decent wind and weather barrier. And obviously we have to talk to Chad and Bill's grounds department about what that obstruction would do for plowing purposes and things like that. But it's not unprecedented. A lot of districts certainly have windbreaks and bus shelters. Uh, last thing I just wanted to mention is the generosity of this district ceases to amaze me. Every holiday season, I see how many people dig into their pockets to try to enrich the lives of, of the less fortunate and really proud of the people who work in this district and in this community. Uh, I wanna give a couple shout-outs. One to Melinda Harrington and Jess Rodriguez, since my first year here have kind of spearheaded the Toys for Tots initiative, which serves over five hundred scholars with Christmas gifts. We also have Jen Hazard and Key Club, which is currently serving two hundred and fifty-eight scholars and they're also planning to help more. Um, they raised seventeen hundred in this Breakfast with Santa this weekend. Jen's always been a great advocate. Uh, LaShawn Hawkins, our elementary community outreach coordinator, has seventy-eight children. She's obviously working hand-in-hand with Key Club and Toys for Tots as well. Turner Construction has adopted a family of eleven. The administration floor here has adopted a family of five, as well as able to serve some other families as well. So you add that up and you're looking at roughly a thousand kids, just under a thousand kids that are being helped out in this holiday season by the generosity of this commu, school community. And I thank everybody who participates and donates to such a worthy cause. Glover'sville's a very, very generous community, so appreciate that and I know the board does as well. And I just thought it was worth illuminating this meeting. Wish everybody in this community a healthy, happy holiday season with their family. That concludes my report. I will need executive session to talk about personnel.
Any questions, comments? All right, moving right along. Next is our administrative reports and I'll turn it over to Nikki Morton, Director of Student Support Services.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Nikki Morton. I'm the Director of Student Support Services. I'll let our assistant directors introduce themselves.
Jennifer Velland, Assistant Director of Student Support Services for grades seven through twelve. Julie Riley, Assistant Director of Student Support Services for K through six.
Our specialized plan for the next two years was compiled based on our current services and programs. In that report, there was a lot of charts and a lot of data, a lot of information in there, so what we were gonna do is just highlight some of that, that information and share that with you.
This is our enrollment of students with disabilities from two thousand and sixteen school year until our current school year in twenty-three, twenty-four. We currently have four hundred and seventy-six students with disabilities in CSE and sixty-five for CPSE. Those numbers can fluctuate year to year based on the number of students who move in and out of the district. Um, it's remained pretty consistent over the last four to five years in the high four hundreds. Um, our initial evaluations are carefully reviewed by one of us to ensure that students have had consistent access to their education before being classified. We review data of implemented instruction to determine if students are making progress. Um, and students are declassified based on the same criteria and we determine if they're at making grade level expectations and at that point they would be declassified. So those initial evaluations and declassifications can also change those numbers year to year.
Sometimes day to day.
Utilizing those numbers to determine our percentage of students with disabilities. We hover around the eighteen percent mark for number of students with disabilities in our district. The state average right now is nineteen percent, so we are under the state average for students with disabilities in our district. And as you can see, we've kind of hovered around that eighty percent for the last four or five years. This is the variety of students that we have classified under different classification. Our highest classification rate is under those with learning disabilities. Our second highest is students with other health impairments. Again, we are careful and we follow regulatory guidelines on how to classify students with which disability and if their eligibility continues to be appropriate each year at their annual review meetings. And then every three years when they're reevaluated for updated assessments, we determine whether or not if they continue to be a student with a disability or if we did classify them. So again, that has impact on the fluctuation of our numbers, but this is where we are currently.
Excuse me, ADHD doesn't appear anywhere.
So ADHD is typically found in our classification of other health impairment. It's our second highest classification.
This chart talks about LRE or the least restrictive environment. Um, when we do classify students, we always wanna look at the least restrictive environment. Um, often we'll have staffers or parents or guardians suggest a smaller classroom. Different classroom types have very different characteristics associated with them. Those are listed out in our learner characteristics. Um, so basically we're looking at what the students' individual needs are, what their strengths are, what their weaknesses are. Um, and basically we're looking for an appropriate placement. We wanna meet their needs, but not over-support them. This over here, that's the regular classrooms, um, inside the regular classrooms for more than eighty percent. That's what we, that's the area that we really wanna aim for. We want our students in the gen ed accessing that general education curriculum as much as possible. This one is kind of in the middle, it's between forty to seventy-nine percent, um, and the other is, is forty percent. Separate school that involves some of our BOSI's programs, especially those that are in like our McNab setting or those that used to be in our MECO setting. It's a completely separate school. It's also some of our out-of-district placements. We have seen some increase, not, not a ton. We've been hovering around the same area, but we do, do have a lack of programs available for some of our students, especially those with this significant behavioral needs, especially as they age into the high school grades. But we are always looking for the least restrictive environment. Also, Sue Ecker, our regional associate from state ed, she's working with us regarding, we ended up on the list, one of the lists for Park Terrace based on our students with disabilities performance on, on state assessments. Even though Park Terrace is a feeder school, it's only, it's a primary school, pre-K through grade two, their performance kind of tracks back to the school that they came from when they go to Boulevard. So, um, she's working with us and actually the module that we're working on is the least restrictive environment. So she's been attending CSE meetings. She's looking at our notes, our meeting notes. our notes, our meeting notes, our documentation as far as why particular students have particular programs or services. This is just kind of an example. I use the, the data from the state, New York State data website. So it's from twenty one, twenty two. It's basically some of those same categories. The middle row is GESD and the last one is the target for New York State. It's not necessarily the average, it's the target that we're aiming for. So we're not meeting necessarily those targets, but obviously, we're, we're working on them.
And this is just the New York State blueprint for approved results for students with disabilities. This is kind of the guideline that we follow and we're trying to make recommendations for students with disabilities. It is intended to ensure that students with disabilities benefit from high quality instruction. We want them to meet the same, same goals that all other students are attempting to meet. The goal is for all of our students, including students with disabilities, to leave school prepared to transition to either post-secondary employment or more learning. It highlights the importance of parents being engaged partners in the special education process. It promotes self advocacy for students and it also uses, utilizes the multi-tiered systems. So we work with Burn, we work with MTSSI Coach to ensure that our instruction is constantly improving for all our students, but especially our students with disabilities.
We've really been trying to work closely with Bernadette Callender, our curriculum director, as far as the curriculum needs. We did have some changes, especially over at Boulevard. We switched from integrated co-teach to DCT or direct consultant teaching. And we are, and at the same time, we also added a new reading curriculum. So we've had a lot of work going on there. I think there was some apprehension initially from our teachers, but I have to tell you, they're really diving right in. They're working really hard and we are seeing some success. They're communicating with us, with Bernadette. We're trying to all meet together, listen to them, make adjustments as we go. So. Any questions? I know it's a lot of data.
I just want to say that I think the three of you are working great together. I've seen improvements since I've been here. I think the numbers, even though we may be below the state average, which is actually kind of surprising. I think they would agree with me when I say that some of our needs are more significant than a lot of districts. Like I look at that autism number, that's a very high number. And when you look at our special ed costs, they continue to rise. It's because some of those numbers are very expensive programs. And the other challenge is finding special education teachers, finding psychologists, finding programs for our hardest to educate scholars has been a challenge in the five and a half years I've been here and I certainly know that they could echo those sentiments. But I feel like working with the building administration, the curriculum director, we're making headway in how we identify, who we identify and how we design instruction to meet the needs. And I hope that the changes in graduation requirements are going to create opportunities that our special education scholars will see is within their grasp. That it's not just hitting a wall, taking tests, not meeting the grade on that, but we can actually find multiple pathways to success. So our, our, our classified scholars will find value in what we're selling here and realize it's their future that we're trying to expose to them and that they're going to do the work necessary to achieve and graduate. That's the ultimate goal. We need to improve the graduation rate of our special ed population. When I first got here, I said it, it's a canary in a coal mine, your special education population. If, if you're struggling with special ed, you're going to struggle across the board. And I feel like Glover'sville is kind of a lighthouse district and doing it by the book. And it's a very challenging district, but a lot of people that we talk to compliment this district on how well we try to serve the needs of our, our most needy scholars. So I applaud the work you ladies do. It's hard work. And so it's a lot, sometimes contentious conversations. People love their children as we all do. And I think that we try to meet the needs first and foremost with the monetary impact as secondary to the needs of the scholars first and foremost.
I have to say, all of our staff are working really hard. Gen ed teachers, special ed teachers, reading services, building admin has been great. We've worked closely with them. We try to find solutions to meet the needs of our students. So we're not doing it alone.
Anyone interested out there to be a special education teacher, there's programs to fast track certification and we will be needing special education teachers this year and every year.
Thanks.
Next report is for the elementary school. I'm not going to have to move again, so go ahead. I'll turn over. Mr. DePansquale.
All right, thank you. I am joined this evening by my assistant principal, Mr. Dennis By. We're going to be talking to you about some of the progress we've made so far this year in twenty three, twenty four at Boulevard. First wanted to say that we have, this is just some of the faces that are new and returning to Boulevard. To my count, we have eighteen new teachers and support staff at Boulevard this year and last year. It is a great combination of energy, ideas and excitement along with our veteran teachers who have that wisdom and experience and know our culture and traditions. Boulevard is off to a really great start. Wanted to point out some of the priorities that we began the school year with. First and of course, always being attendance. I highlighted several components that we're going to dive a little deeper into during the presentation, one being Strive for Five. Under curriculum and instruction, you can see that there are four things highlighted there because that's been a really big focus for us. We started our new CKLA reading program, which you've heard a little bit about. We'll dive a little bit more into that. Our Ready Math program. We also implemented win times in ELA and in math for all students. And as Ms. Morton was talking about, the switch from the integrated co-teach model to the direct consultant teacher model for the majority of our special education students. I also wanted to highlight that Boulevard is participating in the MTSS grant. We have building and, we have participants in the building and district level teams. The focus for us this year is PBIS and Strive for Five. And it's really a continuous improvement kind of mindset and we're really trying to sharpen the spear because as you know, those are two programs that we've had in place for a very long time, but we want to refine and make those even better. And of course, we always have family and community engagement as one of our high priorities and commitments. We have a, a lot of things going on when it comes to communicating with our families through Parent Square, our backpack program, little libraries and some of the things that Mr. Halloran was talking about with Make-A-Wish, Toys for Tots. And our student banking program is alive and well at Boulevard as, as well. So we're going to dive a little deeper, like I said, into these five categories, the first being CKLA. I know you've heard a lot about it. I just wanted to show you what it actually looks like in our Boulevard, in our Boulevard classrooms. In grade three, there's a hundred and twenty minutes of instruction each day. It's two hours of CKLA time. And in fourth and fifth grade, there's ninety minutes each day. Those are recommendations from CKLA themselves as to be able to fit in all the, all the instruction that we need to each day. The instructional focus is all encompassing, reading, writing, grammar, vocabulary, morphology, comprehension. It all fits under CKLA and it allows us to have an aligned curriculum at Boulevard three through five. So for, I gave you a couple examples of what's being taught right now. Third grade's working on the human body, like the skeletal and muscle systems, the inner ear. It's really awesome and really cool about what they're learning. In fourth grade, they're doing Middle Ages. And in fifth grade, they're doing their poetry unit. Each of our fifth graders have like bound poetry journals that they're using right now. The picture shows an example of what was happening in a third grade ELA lesson. And that does look like an operating room because the third graders are in scrubs and masks and they were, you know, performing ELA surgery through, in different stations. And it just shows how even though CKLA is really important and we're really sticking to that really kind of structured lesson format, there's opportunities for our teachers to really show their craft in teaching and engage our students. That's a great example. I know Middle Ages is doing, one of our fourth grade classrooms this week is doing a feast. They're not feasting like kings and queens though. In the Middle Ages, they're feasting like serfs and what that looks like. So teachers are finding a lot of creative ways to implement CKLA. It obviously has a lot of social studies and science right incorporated right in it. And it's really successful due to the professional development that we've had over the last twelve months and the PLCs or the professional learning communities that we have every week with every grade level. We're talking about assessment. We're talking about highlights and areas that need to be improved. We're talking about what questions need to be prioritized for each and every lesson. And we're be, we're able to do that as a grade level in order to support this implementation of CKLA. Strive for Five is alive and well at Boulevard. There's some, some of our scholars there by grade level. The number of students that were here each and every day during the month of November. Wanted to give you some statistics on our attendance so far this year and you can compare it to some of the numbers from previous years. I have September and October as just some examples up here and you can see in yellow is this current school year. We're averaging at about ninety three percent for just about every grade level throughout this school year, which is an improvement over last year and, and continues to improve year to year. Strive for Five scholars, this is just an example. We usually hover around two hundred and fifty. That's students with perfect attendance each month. And we recognize them by name at each and every Principal Pride celebration that we have each month. To date, we have four hundred and fifteen fewer absences this year than we did last year. And it takes a lot of absences to move the needle, right? It takes a lot of those days of instruction to move the needle. So we work on it each and every day. Discipline is down sixty percent, the number of referrals this year over last year. Do you have the numbers right there, Mr. By? I know it was like two hundred and something last year.
Yeah, last year to end out November, two hundred and forty-five referrals, this year seventy-nine.
Listen, I'm going to attribute a lot of that to Mr. By. He came in and started making connections with students and families from day one, actually before day one. I think some of his, like bringing back after-school detention is something that a lot of students don't like to participate in, but that's something that Mr. By has brought back to Boulevard. I think it's been a real deterrent for some of those bigger behaviors. I also think, you know, Mr. By is working with the whole team at Boulevard. We have a pretty good student support team. And we're really trying to support the, our neediest scholars with their behavior management skills. I mean, it is a team effort and, but I mean, I know Mr. By doesn't leave unless every student that needs to be talked to that day has been spoken to that day. So I think trying to address the needs as soon as they happen goes a long way.
Pretty sure those referrals transferred into sixth grade this year.
Could be.
By the way, this is a great slide. I would say, this is a really great slide. Like it's a great representation of what you guys are doing. Yeah, nice work.
And I don't know if I ever remember in all my years at the Coreage, all the numbers are improving in attendance.
Yeah, I mean, we're always shooting for that ninety-five percent. This is, we look at, we look at attendance every day. We look at our percentage of attendance every day. We graph it. This is a snapshot from the beginning of the year into November. You can kind of see that we do start up, up and over ninety-five percent, usually kind of hovers here in the ninety-three. You will also see this one that dives way off the screen. That's a half day. We know that that has an impact on our instructional days and our scholars and families. But usually, we're in the like high seventies for attendance percentage on a half day. So that does have an impact.
We've got a contest. We have an, an attendance contest this month. For instance, each grade level, whoever, whichever class has the highest attendance for the month, get a pizza and ice cream party at the end of the month. And the kids are talking about it. So we're doing everything we can think of to.
Are those both half days, those, those dips?
This is the first half day. I don't have the second one on this snapshot. I had to put this together before that one.
But it'd be bad too.
It will be. These are, these may be due to some illness. You see, this point here was Halloween. One of our highest attendance. We're followed quite literally the next day by one of our poorest attendance days. So those things can impact us. I do think that was some illness in there. Okay, another component to the curriculum instruction that we really focused on this year is what I need or win time. It's forty minutes every day and every student's schedule for ELA and it's thirty minutes every day for math. Scholars here are grouped based on skill. So CKLA is one level. It's all at grade level. Ready Math is all at one grade level, but this is where we actually meet the needs of our scholars, whether they're needing extra help or where they're able to excel. They're, students are matched with either a reading or math specialist if they need to work on some fundamental or basic skills. And they're matched with classroom teachers or teaching assistants if they're on grade level or above grade level. And there we're able to really offer a wide variety of instructional support or acceleration. These are some great examples, right? So this might be some small group instruction that you'd see in, in reading and in math with our specialists. But this is a third grader who's working on a writing project. I asked, what are you writing about? They said, well, we're learning about Mexico. I was like, oh, that's great. They're learning about Mexican culture and some of their societal traditions. And they were trying to describe what that might look like and feel like in Glover'sville. And they were writing pages and pages about this really interesting idea of comparing the two cultures. And that was a third grader who is in one of our accelerated groups. Also wanted to briefly talk about Ready Math. While I'm doing that, you can kind of look at one of our try it questions, see if you can solve that one. It's fourth grade. In Ready Math, we are working on vertical and horizontal alignment, just like in CKLA and like we've heard, heard from some of the other reports tonight. All of our classrooms are kind of in sync and in step. Ready Math is important because it uses try, discuss and connect routine. They start a lesson with a question like this. This is not a direct instruction. No one's been taught this yet. They, some, our students have some skills in order to solve a problem like this, but it gets their brain going. And then, then this teacher does their direct instruction, but in that something that Ready Math calls productive struggle. It gets their brains working. It doesn't give them necessarily the answer right away and it helps their brain to make some better connections. The other thing that they work on is cognitive discourse. It's fancy word for, or fancy set of words for just having real discussions. We know as adults that the best way for us to learn something is to teach it to somebody else, right? Well, when you're having cognitive discourse or you're having these really productive conversations during math, you really have to understand the content. So part of the math program is facilitating those discussions among students. That happens in each of our lessons. And the connected part of the routine connects it to other math concepts that they've been learning along the way and connects it to their real, their, their own lives. So all those components in our Ready Math are important. We also had the Ready Math pathway going on that individualizes instruction for each of our scholars as well. Did anybody solve that one? Anybody got it, I think?
Oh, it doesn't say whether or not of that five is the driver, so.
It's not a trick question. So here are a few things that Boulevard's been up to since we started the school year. There are a lot of things. Just wanted to highlight a couple. We love having Gabe with our Read With Me program. He's our therapy dog. Ann Trojan brings him to school several times a week and not only is he there to kind of hang out with our students and staff members, but students actually read with Gabe. You'll find out a little bit more about him next month in Ann's board presentation. You know, in October, we had a lot of great things going on, but I just wanted to highlight something that maybe we take for granted. We have a swim, Learn to Swim program in Glover'sville. All third, fourth and fifth graders go to the middle school for two weeks out of the year. It's one of those things that we always do and we never really talk about. I mean, I saw a news a news story, like on the news the other night about Schenectady bringing a couple of kids up to the, up to their pool and everybody was celebrating that they had. and everybody was celebrating that they had one time where they could go up there and make sure they had some pool safety. And I was like, "Man, we do that? We don't... We all do that." We actually teach them how to swim, we teach them how to be safe in pools and around water, and we do that for third... All third, fourth, and fifth graders two weeks out of the school year. So one of those things that's been in place, there's nothing new there, but I thought I'd, you know, at least recognize all the... Some of the good things that we really try to do. Our Veterans Day parade was outstanding this year. We had a choral performance. Mr. Holtzauer's students memorized and recited the Gettysburg Address. We had about fifty veterans come to our parade that day, and the reception from our kitchen staff was just fantastic. And our third graders got to visit Skidmore, those are the pictures that you see there. A couple of our third-grade classes got to go to Skidmore and work with some of the Skidmore students, visit a museum, see a show, a dance performance, and that was just a really great day and another good example of partnership that you have with one of our colleges. Extracurricular, I really try to make it a point to provide opportunities for every Boulevard student to be able to participate in things outside of the normal school day. Of course, we have band and chorus, our swim program and our after-school program, but we also have a variety of clubs and activities and tutoring after school. I think this is a low number, but I counted up at least five-hundred-and-twenty-five slots that we've filled just since school started this year on extra things that our scholars can do beyond the school day. And that's just something I'm pretty proud of. Obviously, that's some of our fifth-grade band students up there practicing, and those are some examples of some bulletin boards that got redone by our club. Oh, yeah. This is it. I just wanted to update us on the fifth-grade trip. As many of you know, we're taking a new trip this year with our fifth graders to the... Up to Lake George on this really cool boat. That's the picture of the inside, I think. It looks like a wedding there, but no one's getting married, I don't think, for us. All of our fifth-grade parents have been notified. There is a cost, as you may be aware of, of twenty-five dollars for each of our scholars. The first payment is due on the sixth this week. Many have already sent in their money. Option one is just pay the twenty-five dollars upfront, and we have four payment plans where they can kind of space out as low as five dollars as part of the plan to do that. And we actually had a checkbox on there that said if you want to sponsor another family. We have actually some fifth-grade families, hundreds of dollars already sponsoring other families that may need that for our fifth-grade trip. So beyond that, there might even be some grant opportunities that we can kind of offset the cost with also. And we're doing small things in the building, like Hat Day. I know fifth grades recycling cans in the building as well to kind of help to offset some of those costs.
Dave, is this something that foundation... The foundation money could be used for?
I would think this would absolutely be something the foundation would consider trying to help fund. Has the class of 2024 advisors reached out to you yet about possibly sponsoring?
A student?
They have not.
They haven't reached out to me, but I'll check with our fifth-grade unit leader.
Go ahead and mention it to them, because, you know, these classes always have extra money every year.
That would be great. Yep, much appreciated, thank you. Can I answer any questions, other questions?
A lot of great things happened, really great things.
Keep up the great work, great presentation. Looks like a lot of great things happened, so.
Next item is our student board member report.
Hi, so really, all I can say is that everything's been going pretty well. I haven't heard... I always reach out to my peers, I'm always asking what's going on, whether I'm friends with them or not, making sure everybody's happy, well. And the only thing that's brought to my attention is the fundraising program for our Boys and Girls of our C teams. There's... There are two separate hoop clubs, one for each team, and they just don't believe that it's really appropriate to still be having them be two separate programs. And that's just... I just wanted to voice that to everybody. I'm personally not on the basketball team, so I can't say anything, like, any personal opinion, but it's voicing for them, that it would be nice to have that be one big fundraising team that is all-around. And it's supported by the alumni. If anybody wasn't aware, they bring the money in, which is also contributing to the... This was brought to my attention mostly by the girls' team, and that's because of the fact that the alumni from the boys' team tend to have more... They contribute more than the girls do.
And certainly, we'll have further discussion. I know, I think the hoop club is an outside agency?
Yes.
And I know the fundraising done through the Lady Dragons is an internal club. And I did talk to Mr. Dean Magistris about equity in what they're receiving, and he assured me that the girls' teams are receiving comparable travel clothing, things like that. So, but we have had some preliminary conversations, because I knew that this was something that was raised, but we're looking into it, but it's not... It's clear-cut, because they're two separate entities, one internal, one external. Certainly looking into it, though.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, welcome to the board.
Next item, we have recommended action. Items nine point zero-one through nineteen point thirty-two. Anyone need to call or discussion on any of those? Motion to approve those. By Mike, seconded by John. All in favor? I need a motion for executive session to discuss several personnel items. Motion by Andy, seconded by Sharon. All in favor on that? There may be action taken afterwards. Otherwise, thank you for coming tonight, everyone.